Village Borough Stockton Township of West Amwell. And advertised in the Hunter County Democrat and Trenton Times Newspaper. Please stand for the Black Solution.
My position is to testify for the United States of America. And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the Lord, and justice around.
Roll call please.
Jennifer Bachelor.
Here.
Martin Dennis.
Here.
Dean of the Shetty.
Here.
Brian Keys.
Here.
Kevin Covalesi. Aaron O'Leary. Michael Strauss.
Here.
Lani Todd Marina. Jim Gallagher.
Here. Uh, next we have to administer the oath of office to Mrs. Dennis. So listen, you can stand.
All right. I mark the dentist who solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same to the governments established in the United States and this state. Under the authority of the people. I mark the dentist who solemnly swear or affirm that I possess the qualification prescribed by law for the office. Of member of Board of Education and that I am not disqualified as a voter for South Jersey Revised Statute nineteen four dash one. Or disqualified due to convictions of a crime or offense listed in the New Jersey Statute eighteen A twelve dash one. And I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of the office according to the best my ability.
Very good. Thank you.
Well.
Okay, uh, our student representative apparently went home from school sick today. So I don't think we're going to have a report from the student representative for the board. So with that, um, do we have anybody from LA? Yep. For our report, believe they'll be coming around. Call a comment. Okay, fine. Uh, how about the PTO? Oh, sorry.
Hello, Jessica Hardigan, PTO. Um, so in lieu of kids night out February, the PTO will be hosting a Valentine's Day dance Friday, February seventh in the multipurpose room at South Elementary. Um, the grades will be broken up between pre K and first. They'll attend between six and seven and second and fourth will attend between seven fifteen and eight fifteen. Um, this is not a drop off event and students must be accompanied by an adult at all times. Um, admissions five dollars per student with a max of twenty per family. Um. Families can either pay cash at the door or they can sign up early on membership toolkit. Um, there will be snacks, drinks, glow sticks and earplugs for the grownups for sale also. Um, it gets really loud in there with the DJ. Um, beyond the bell after school enrichment is almost ready to launch. We launched next week, which is really exciting because we've put a lot of effort and work into it. Registration will be open from February third to February twenty eighth. Registration is available on membership toolkit or paper forms. Um, please be on the lookout and backpack mail if you have a student in elementary school. Um, we had some really great responses and people volunteering to teach or not volunteering, but signing up to teach classes. We have about fifteen classes to offer students, which is pretty impressive. Um, that is subject to change, of course, based on enrollment if we have to collapse classes or anything like that, but um, classes will be available Monday through Thursday from March tenth to May twenty third. Um, and there will also be a signup genius coming out this week, um. Asking for parent volunteers. Parent volunteers will be, um. Asked to assist teachers, help run kids to the restroom and help with attendance and dismissal. Parents and staff members in grades, um, pre K through six, if you have any pictures, please send them to the PTO email address. Lot of staff members here. So if you could please send us pictures, we definitely need it. Our yearbook committee has been really busy building pages, so they're not stopped doing it at the end of the year. Um, a signup genius went out today for Penny Wars. This is going to be a district wide event and it it turns into a really good and wonderful fundraiser. So please sign up for that if you're able. Um, we're starting to work on events for the middle school and location for the end of the year. Um, there is going to be a fifth and sixth grade dance, sixth grade class trip. And an end of the year picnic. Again, another signup genius is going to go out for that. If anyone's available to help with that, that's going to be a bit of an undertaking and we constantly ask like the same five people to do all the things. So. If anyone listening at home or in this room has any time to give to that, that would be really wonderful. Um. And I just wanted to take time to thank all of our volunteers who continue to show up and work really hard on all of our events from holiday shop to after school enrichment, Christmas tree pickup, kids night out. Um. We wouldn't be able to do any of the things we do without people helping. Um, so that's really wonderful and thank you. That's it.
I just wanted to acknowledge the work that Jess and the PTO has done on the enrichment program. Um, from back in the fall till now and all the different activities that we're going to offer. It's taken a ton of work. So thank you. It's going to be awesome.
Okay, um. Our fore- under correspondence, we did have one letter last month that was posted online for anyone who's. Um. Next up, uh, we have, uh, we need a motion to approve our minutes from our regular meeting. Uh, December sixteenth and December the tenth. And our executive minutes from November the twenty fifth. But I have a note. I'll move by Martha. Thank you. And a second please. Alright, seconds like that. But thank you. Any discussion on those minutes? All those in favor? Hi, anyone opposed? Uh, next up, first up, we have a, uh, report. On mid mid year student data update. Thomas Splener, please say.
Thank you. Um, good evening, President Gallagher, members of the board, Mr. Suzo and community members. Thank you for the opportunity to present our district's K eight winter benchmark assessment results from our middle of the year testing window. Tonight's presentation will provide you with a comprehensive overview of how our students are progressing academically at this crucial midpoint throughout the year. We'll examine performance data across all grade levels, looking both areas of strengths and opportunities for growth. The information will help us understand the effectiveness of our instructional strategies, inform our adjusted adjustments as needed and move on to our second semester. The data I'm about to share. It reflects the hard work of all of our students, the dedication of our teachers and the ongoing partnership with our families. While these benchmark assessments are just one measure of student achievement, they provide a valuable insight with our students mastery. A grade level standards and help us identify where additional supports may be needed. As we review these results together, I want to acknowledge behind every data point is a child with unique needs, circumstances and potential. So our goal in sharing this information is not just to measure performance, but to ensure that we're providing resources and the support necessary for each child. So I want to go ahead and acknowledge the board and thank you, um, for allowing me to come tonight. We had. Had this opportunity or had this discussion at our curriculum committee. And we really thought it was very important for us to report out on the progress as opposed to one time in October or November. Where we pre- present our NJSLA student achievement data. So the purpose of tonight's presentation is really to show you the growth. And the opportunities in which we have, um, provided our students in the first two marking periods. So think about that. Marking period one, marking period two, so not a lot of time and you will see tonight the growth. And the exceptional work of our teachers and the dedication of everyone to being, um. The best for our students and showing up for them and then helping them understand how they need to show up for us as well with the achievement results. So thank you. And we'll go ahead and dive in. So the demographics, this is as of January first. And it shows a snapshot of the population across all our schools. I know it's a little difficult to read from the back. But our total enrollment, as you see, is seven hundred and ninety four students and it represents diverse backgrounds and learning needs. Understanding demographic data is crucial as we examine achievement data. Cause it helps us understand where their gaps and how to ensure instructional strategies are meeting the various needs of our students. In the following slides, we'll analyze the different student groups performed and how they performed on our winter benchmark data. And then discuss some strategies that specifically target and support students' needs. So I ready, you've heard me talk a lot about I ready since last spring when we talked about how we were using it, um, in our hit program. Or our tutoring program and then how that provided such a pilot, um, structure for us to implement this year with accelerate and flex. With I ready, we can better understand what students still need to learn. And find ways to. Meet those instructional priorities of our students as well as build a classroom culture that data guides instruction. So it's very important. To have these conversations with students, with families, with each other during our PLCs, with the admin team. And then vertically across many different subgroups. So as we look at the different performance levels, um, with I ready, I wanted to point out. That there there are five different levels. So mid or above grade level is a dark green. And these colors correlate to the back, the graphs I'm going to show you on the next couple of slides. The reason that the on grade level when yellow it has a highlight is just because you can't read yellow lettering. Um, but then you will see the two or more grade levels below and three or more grade levels. And everything that the student does in the personalized instruction during accelerate or flex is tied to how they did on the diagnostic. So with that, we can have a unique and specific understanding of where the students are. And just because, um, there's a lot of data behind I ready, uh, they did a large scale study a couple of years ago, um, in students in K and eight. Who met the recommended guidelines of I ready usage. So between thirty and forty minutes each week per subject. They exceeded their typical growth measures, um, and achieved higher growth on standardized testing for those that didn't meet those necessary minutes. So even though we talk about the importance of meeting certain expectations and guidelines, it's because the research supports it. I didn't pick up. Oh, let's just do thirty minutes. There's research behind everything we do so that we can say this works. This has been proven. And let's give it a go and tailor and iterate it for those of us for our South Hunter and kids. So we also give benchmarks and I'm not going through every one of the benchmarks we give in our assessment profile. But I wanted to highlight those, um, where we have the most amount of data and that we can report out. Um, so we also give reveal benchmarks and those of you that know reveal is their math program. We use K eight. So we're developing that consistency across all the grade levels. The reveal benchmarks, as some of you noticed on the, um, assessment calendar that's posted online, they're what's called cumulative. So they assess the students, um, from one to seven, one to four, depending on what the grade level is. And the purpose of that is though that teachers can provide a spiral review for the students and their math skills. So at this point in time, every grade level except I think it's second grade has given their first benchmark assessment. Um, and then second grade is going to give it to the first week in February, but this keeps all of our, um, instruction on pace. And our pacing guides are set to cover all of the instruction and the standards needed for the NJSLA in mid May. So the point is to keep on pace to assess and then pace our students across the district and find out where the opportunities are for additional supports. So here we go. We're going to dive right into the reading data. So what I did was we developed, um. The what we'll go through first is the diagnostic results and we're comparing the fall versus the winter. And we're going to go through the reading data first. So as you see, we see encouraging growth. Patterns among the first, these first three grade levels. And you see our kindergarten classes have shown remarkable progress with sixty six percent of the students now working on grade level material. So it is a little challenging to see the numbers from the back of the room. I have shared it with the staff, um, and. Tomorrow we will go ahead and share it with the community at large, but I want you to see as you follow the green. So when we're looking at our trends, we're trending up and to the right where we move from the fall to the winter. So as you can see, our green gets larger, our red gets smaller and we can see the progress that students are making. First grade has also demonstrated strong greens with thirty three percent of our first graders now working at grade level material. This is particularly strong growth for our students who receive targeted interventions. And we've got to move from eighty, from, excuse me, from eighty four percent and then one below at sixty eight percent. Grade two, fifty four percent of the students are working on grade level at this time of the year. Grade through shows, oh, go on to the, you can go on to the next one. Grade three shows. Amazing progress with sixty nine, you lost your connection, Tony.
Hello.
Three is the board members can see from the graphs in front of them has sixty nine percent of the students working on grade level. That is outstanding for this time of year. Think about what that means. What breed students is when. We bring it up, we will see. Also showed significant amount of improvement in their reading score. Sixty percent of the students are now reading on grade level compared to forty four percent in the fall. This growth correlates directly with the implementation of small group instruction and our new integrated reading, writing. And vocabulary program. So we're seeing these results across. Different platforms. So the instruction they're getting during wit and wisdom in their ELA blocks is then translating. Um, to the I ready lessons and the diagnostic information. So at the elementary level, K four, we have fifty eight percent of the school working on grade level. Working on grade level exactly where they're supposed to be. Fifty eight percent of the students are on track for end of the year achievement. We moved to fifth and sixth grade. Again, we're seeing trends upward and to the right. So we know we still have more work to do and that's fine. As oftentimes as you get into the grades, the upper grades. The gaps get a little bit larger as imaginable because you have more unfinished learning. So that's okay. We've making the progress as you can see. The students, the green is growing and the red is shrinking. Seventh and eighth grade reading. Again, we implemented a new program and, um, with wit and wisdom, we know that there's some logistical constraints. We know that we are on a rotating drop for seventh and eighth grade for both math and reading. And that's challenging for programs that are written for a middle school, um, five days a week, but our teachers are doing great. As as our students. So again, we're seeing that progress where we're seeing the big red. Which is the three or more grade levels below go down and we're seeing the dark green and the light green move up. So again, we're seeing great progress and we're moving in the right direction. We're now switching over to go to look closely at math. Again, we've got the growth in kindergarten. You could see that we've closed that, um, one grade level below, which would be preschool. And now students are working at grade level content with, um, the two green bands. Same thing, we're seeing that small, that closing of. The red at the top, and I know those are tough to see typically, um, if the top dark red is four percent, that's about one point eight students or one, two students. So when we consider all of the students are assessed in the sim- on the I ready diagnostic, that includes all. Of our different subgroups, our special education, our multilingual learners, all of our students. And so that progress is amazing. And again, we're seeing the growth. Getting, you can just look at the growth of the red reducing second grade is a hu- is a great example as well. Um, where that small red bar, um, shrunk immeasurably. Excuse me, measurably. Again, we're looking at, um, grades three and four. The green is growing. As you can see, um, with the fourth grade math. Like. Large green box at. Or above grade level. Has shown tremendous progress. Fifth and six, we know we've got some work to do. We are using the accelerate time to monitor the progress as well as. Monitor how we're doing with reveal and our pacing with reveal. Um, so again, we know we can see where the specific targets are and where specifically we need to focus our interventions and additional strategies. And seventh and eighth grade math. Um, we're looking here, we were going to identify seventh grade as the, you know, that's going to be the one cohort we're going to focus on. We knew that coming in to seventh grade this year, we had six of their previous scores and NJSLA. Um, also told us that these, this cohort of students needs some support. For whatever reason, when they were, we want to go back to COVID in second grade, um, we can. Put all of those different things into place as we look at our students. So I just want to share some of the, um, or share the plan we have for our seventh grade math students. So as you know, oh, no, I'm going to talk a little bit about this before I get on to the, um, suggested activities. So what we're going to do is similar to the MTSS and the tiers. At the K six level that we've been so successful, we're going to implement a tiered support system, um, for seventh and eighth grade beginning next week. What we'll do is, um, we have data meetings, um, beginning tomorrow. So tomorrow we'll meet with the elementary school. Uh, and we'll review the data and then on Wednesday we will re- meet with the high school. And review the data from the high school as well as the seventh and eighth grade. So what we'll do is we'll be able to, just like we do at the K six level, we'll be able to take the seventh and eighth grade. Data. And again, I'm going to speak to seventh and eighth grade, and this is where we're going to work on tiered instruction. We are not tiering the high school. I just want to make that clear as I'm talking. And so we will look at all of the data. We can break the, or we can divide the students up into tiered groups, just like we do with the elementary school. We can look at the students and say, look at them that are three or more grade levels below. What do we need to do with these students? So at that point in time, we're going to restructure our flex for the seventh grade math students. So that they are working in small groups, just like we do at the elementary school. We're going to be able to track the progress. We're going to be able to train the teachers and provide instruction with the I ready toolbox. Which are lessons that are taught to students in small group, not on the computer. And then the teacher can assess, um, and assign specific skills, just like we do, um, at the elementary level and the student passes. That quiz and moves on to another deficit. So the idea is that we are creating these small targeted groups and in seventh grade math. Cause that's where we're starting right now because we have identified that is the cohort. And we know that when we identify a targeted group. Then we can do the most amount of work. Parents will be part of this process as well. You will, parents will receive a letter saying your student is now going to be receiving the support two to three times a week during flex. You may notice that there may be additional practice with I ready at home. As well as additional practice during the other flex days. So we're taking all of the things that we put into place. Um, last spring with the high impact tutoring that was such a success. Put into place this year as we've just seen with the elementary data, what it looks like when we're successful. And we're going to now take that and implement that with the seventh grade. Math students moving forward. So I also want to share that, um, we, because of. Our tutoring and the company we, um. Contracted with for the high impact tutoring during the day, which we're going to start to, or excuse me, after school, um. Based on our grant money that we're starting tomorrow for fifth and sixth graders after school, we do have additional licenses. Um, for teacher and students. So we're going to be offering a high impact tutoring after school for seventh and eighth graders in math. So that information will be communicated to families within the next, um, week or so. And then we look to probably start that in mid February and then we would be able to provide after school support for. Them as well. All of these things we have learned work really well. So let's go ahead and give them a go at the middle school level. Um, and. We will have updates and I'll be able to provide updates, um. At board meetings next month, I can provide an update on how we're doing as well as with the curriculum committee, um. Moving forward. So, um, at this point, I just want to shift gears a little bit and talk a little bit about before we get to next step, or you can move to next steps is fine. Um, but I want to address, um, some of the conversations and the questions and concerns we've had about students above grade level. So when I in- I introduced I ready earlier this evening, I noted that I ready also gives a clear understanding of student who's performing at. Or above grade level. And since this performance band I ready contin- can, uh, excuse me, considers consistent with performing. Where students need to be, I can't separate, we don't separate at. The above grade level for the at grade level. So we look at all of that green and we say, this is what the students are doing and they're consistently meeting grade level standards. Yet I want to share that the diagnostic score allows us to identify skills and standards that a student has mastered. So which allows them exposure to content that is above grade level. So the personalized lessons are all based on where the student has succeeded. So as we look at where students are to enrich and, um. Accelerate or extend activities. You know, specifically maybe for our gifted and talented students, we're looking at an adaptive assessment that's helping us focus on what a student has mastered. Where they have succeeded and then how can we support them moving forward? So the I ready diagnostic, just to give you some information, um, as students are presented with the diagnostic. The, um, they will be presented with fifty percent of the information that they've been exposed to and know. And fifty percent of the content that they don't know. So that's why it can be very challenging as a student moves through being successful. The program adapts as students might not get the answers correctly or may not be succeeding with that skill. The program adapts and then the student is, the assessment changes. So that the student isn't met with frustration, but they're also not met with boredom or accelerating through something that they feel like they already know. Um, so it pinpoints their exact ability on where they are and what they know. Students are also exposed to above grade level material. So a second grade student could be working on grade level content and skills. In within a personalized learning path, and that's not to say they've mastered everything with second grade. It's just saying they've mastered some of the skills and concepts so they can move on to third grade. So just like any of the teachers here can tell you, there are things in third grade standards that are sometimes easier than what are in second grade standards. If you're looking at some of the math concepts, measurement and data or specific geometry. So. The way that I ready works, it's very personalized for that student and where they're being successful. So. Excuse me, just like two teachers can look at toolbox lessons that support and close some learning gaps. They can also look at toolbox lessons within I ready that will then extend. They can also, we can also extend part of the reveal curriculum. There's extensions and wit and wisdom. So there's lots of areas for extension, but I wanted to speak a little bit to, um. How we use it for our gifted and talented students as well as any student that's performing at or above. Um, some of the. Just suggested activities as we move through this, we're going to look to set some goals for the diagnostic spring. Assessment as well as our NJSLA. This is just about the time we start to have conversations about what does it look like? As we prepare students for the end of, or the spring state testing. We want to celebrate performance and improvement and progress towards our goals within the next week. We will be calling students down to the main office in each one of the three elementary, um, buildings. To share that these are the students that have met their stretch goal already at this point in time. That means they've surpassed their typical growth goal and they have exceeded that. So we're going to celebrate them with a small goodie bag and their name announced over. Um, the loudspeaker and we'll also highlight them on social media. So I want to be able to highlight that there are students who may be meeting stretch roles in reading, but maybe they haven't met those goals in math and that's perfectly fine. So we have all that, those names and we're ready to go next week. Um, so what we're continuing to doing is then address the bright spots, look for areas of focus and then plan next steps. What data can this give us? To help support all of our students. So as I talk about often about our professional learning, learning communities and what teachers will be doing. So over the month of February, they will be meeting and discussing the class data. Um, and we'll be looking as we are in our data meetings across vertical, so we'll look across content. So how can we use the new updated writing standards in our science and math and technical areas? How can we use reading informational texts or nonfiction in our social studies, history, science and other classes? Um, so we'll be looking at those. We're going to look to see how we can support students and accelerate and flex. Meaning what specific groups? Do we need to form? What students have now met goals that we're going to exit from tier three? We may be keeping them in tier two or what students have met all the goals and now are just going to have tier one support in their classroom. We will go ahead and know families have been asking, we'll be sharing the individual student reports with families. After the February fifth, um, middle school on location data meeting, I wanted to make sure we had all those conversations. So those reports will go home just like they went home in the fall. And then we're going to look at the tier two. And then we're going to look at the tier two and the tier three students and we can do that specifically in iReady. And then look to say, how can we support these students within the content and the lessons we're teaching every day? And that is a wrap. Thank you for everyone and all their hard work.
Board members, do you have any questions about the presentation?
Absolutely. So that is data we can pull from iReady, which is really, really helpful. So measurement and data and geometry are two math domains that we see, um, especially as we get into the upper grades. It was funny, I had a conversation with an administrator today. So when do they teach measurement and data in the elementary? I was like, actually they started in kindergarten. So the way that the, our math program is set that all four of those domains are taught all the way from kindergarten through. So when we look at, think about geometry for kindergarteners, we think about shapes, right? Being able to identify them. And then it moves up and spirals throughout the year. So when we look at like seventh grade math and we look at measurement and data, we might be looking at reviewing area and perimeter and multiplying fractions or elapsed time. Those are typically area, perimeter and time. What, no matter where you are and what grade level are typically the most challenging and geometry. So thinking about how we teach geometry sta- domain at the middle, um, excuse me, the middle school, the elementary levels. A lot of that comes through our modeling, which was something is one of the, the areas on NJSLA that our students, um, need to practice more. So in all of our math lessons and our units, they talk about math modeling practices. So that's using manipulatives, that's visual, that's spatial, that's actually modeling what it may look like um, in a math lesson. So instead of just reading or drawing boxes with area and perimeter, kids, I've been in a third grade math lesson where the child and the teacher actually put blocks together so that they could identify what two times two means and how to find the area, because they actually put four blocks together. So we really are looking now after this diagnostic data, how can we then, um, create enough opportunities for practice for measurement and data and geometry?
Any other questions from the board?
But comment just. Uh, I, I would be remiss with so many of our teachers in the audience today to not say this is obvious from the data. Lot of work has gone into this, not only in getting the kids working in iReady, but in the process of getting them in iReady. You can see from that early, the, the early band data that they need to adopt and get into the program. So that is a lot of work and I want to thank our, our teachers for doing that. And for me, leading that charge.
Absolutely, absolutely. And kids grow, right? Like and it's the constants, okay, trust the process. They're going to grow. They're going to develop and a kindergartner at five is going to be very different than the kindergartner at six, right? And so, and our teachers know that, right? So there's ebbs and flows and, you know, sometimes the program doesn't meet where the children are at a certain point and that's okay. Um, because it's a work in progress, right? Our kids need to be in school and experiencing and being taught the material, just like there is a report I can run in iReady that if students at this point in time, if they took the NJSLA tomorrow, what would they do? There was no other teaching. Well, 54% of our students will score, um, fours. So that's the data we can get from iReady. But we know that there's a whole extra year. I mean, we haven't even gone through, um, the rest of the content. And remember, whenever we talk about standards, we're talking about standards at the end of the year. So, uh, New Jersey Student Learning Standard is what students are to accomplish at the end of the year. So after they've gone through several iterations of exposure and practice and then mastery, that's where we sit. And that's why we push and choose our test dates for NJSLA absolute latest we possibly can. Some districts have to do it in March and I, you know, feel sorry for them because there's a lot of unfinished learning in March. But we chose the absolute latest we possibly could with allowing for makeups and sufficient to the state. So that's just a, a strategy, um, that we put into place last year. I'm not, I, I don't know previously what you, um, what South Hundred had done before. So.
Any other question?
Gina, can you talk a little bit about, um, I guess to your point that kids grow? Um, so some, some people might say this progress could just be exposure, that, that, that it's just, that's what you would expect. So can you talk to how our data compares to the data that iReady, um, normally sees?
Absolutely, absolutely. So when we look, and I didn't get into a whole lot because there's a, it's a, it gets very technical. But when we look at typical growth data is 50% of the students, uh, or excuse me, they have mastered 50% of the content at this point in the year. It makes perfect sense, right? So 50% of the year is done, 50% of the data. So when you look at our data and I was talking about 66% are on grade level or 58%. So, so we're above and, um, where we need to be at this point in the year. And as the teachers look and dive into their class data, they can see exactly where students are and how far they, and the, the mastery they've had. I, we're working with teachers and 77% of their students have mastered. So when we look at that data, we're, we're ahead, which helps us. Um, and so that's some of the, those are the, some of the reports that we'll look at, at the data meetings as well. We'll look at the projection of proficiency, they call it. And so where are the students today, as I talked about, and where are they projected to be? So we talk about that as being typical growth. And then the other measurement of growth is called stretch growth. And I didn't get too much into that, but we can measure students. Uh, it's called their stretch growth. And so it's typically a percentage above their typical growth. So those kids, as we said, we're going to celebrate those that have met that for the diagnostic. That means they're on their way to being way beyond, um, where they're supposed to be at the end of the year.
Question. Yeah. Well, first I just want to echo what Michael said and say thank you to all the teachers for like. Um, I had a question, I have two questions actually. The first one is about the slot, the slide, um, that deals with local, local benchmarks and universal screening assessments. When that, when all that testing is completed, will that be looked at relative to the iReady? Data. And so how are those going to be put together and how will that be used?
So that's what we'll talk about at the data meetings. Um, there's, there's, I mean, to get into the DIBELS for K three and to, to get into the iXL for the high school. I mean, it would be a very long presentation. I wanted to show, I wanted to talk about the K eight iReady data because it's something that sweeping across all those grades, whereas the DIBELS is there's some assessments in kindergarten and first, and then there are other assessments in second. Okay, one, two, and then there are additional assessments we use for third. So it's a little bit more complicated. And those assessments for DIBELS are our early literacy assessments. So those are our letter sounds called phonics, phonemic awareness, understanding, um, fluency passages. And so all of those are, are building blocks for learning to read. And so those, those data points we will use this week, I'll use them tomorrow as I meet with the elementary school to say, you know, we've created, um, what we're calling a rubric and to identify students for tier two and tier three. So we look at a certain score for iReady, we look at a certain score for DIBELS, we look at a certain score for, and for grades and the upper grades. So all of those things come together to allow us to create a profile of what a tier two student or a tier three student, we don't just rely on iReady. Or we, just like we just don't rely on grades, just like we don't just rely on teacher input. We have to put all of those things together. And as I also said, like, this is just a data point. So if a teacher says the child really needs some extra support, we say, okay, why do you think that? Sure. Tell me why they were out of the country. They've been dealing a lot at home, this, that and everything. That's fine. And that's why we have an in-person meeting so we can determine that. Um, and did that help answer your question a little bit? Or enough or?
No, I, I, I think so. Yeah. Um, I think so. Um, my other question actually had to do with the tier two and tier three that are kind of mentioned on the next step slide. The one thing I, one of the things I was wondering about is what about tier one? You know, who's one grade behind. So, you know, supports for, I'm assuming that's what tier one is, right? One grade behind and tier two is two grades behind.
Tier one is the whole class. And so typically we identify, um, students in tier two and tier three or two or more grade levels. Or two grade levels below and then three or more grade levels. If a student is at one skill standard or strategy, one grade level below, we know that working with the teacher in small groups within the classroom, peer support, all of the things that we have in place in our classroom is going to support that student. That's why we do these data checks, because if a student is one grade level below at a certain point in the year, and then we see that they're two or grade levels below, we say, okay, let's scoop them up and let's put them in the small group with the interventionist or with the standards with support teacher. So we're always monitoring the progress. So I guess like when we're looking at all the charts of the green, the yellows and the reds. I mean, in most of those charts, the yellow is the, the biggest group, right? Which is one grade level behind. They're basically receiving the same kind of intervention or assistance as the, the green. The kids in the green would, no. No, no, they would receive specifically what they need. So that's the data and that's what we get from the, the everyday.
On the iReady, they're going to receive what they need from them, the MyPath. Is that what you, you mean?
They're, they're going to receive it from the teacher. So a teacher, you know, and there's so much more to a classroom instruction than just these data points. I mean, I would tell you that classroom instruction is outweighs all of these data points. The teachers have the kid in front of them. They know exactly what they need from one unit to the next, from one lesson to the next. So if a student, if they teach a math lesson and there's four students that aren't understanding whatever the concept was, the teacher pulls those four students and reteaches, provides another practice page. And that's why we work in small groups, because there are students that did understand it and are good to go independently. So even though on iReady, they may be presenting as one grade level below, you know, in our classrooms, we know that when we teach something, 80% of the students are going to get it the first time. We know 20% of the students, we're going to automatically have to pull in a small group or reteach them in some way. You know, I don't, they could have not gotten it because they have an ear infection and they can't cure correctly. Or maybe they need something, um, visually as opposed to just auditorily. So lots of different things, but the teachers know that. And so the tier one students, um, that everyone is exposed to the material. And then it's just a matter of looking at the lesson and looking who was successful with the lesson, the independent practice, the small group practice, that kind of thing. Thank you.
Just wanted to clarify one thing, because I, just when you were answering, um, Ronnie's question, when we, just to clarify, um, so when we're talking about that we have like fifty, you know, how was the 53% of the kids that are in the green, right? But I think we, you said something about like, well, we're halfway through the year, right? But that should mean that we've learned half the material, not that half the kids would, you know what I'm saying? Like, so the, the diagnostics that they were, that were given is, is based only on the material that we've learned to this point in the year. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, we, we would want 100% of the kids to be at grade level, no matter what point of the year, right? Not 50% halfway through.
But the way iReady diagnostic works, as I said, it's 50% what they know and 50% what is new material that they're being exposed to. So that's where the fluctuation comes in.
These numbers where the kids, you know, the, how we're categorizing it as being at grade level, one grade level behind. Like that's based on the material that we've learned to the point in the year, right? So I think, I just, I think, and that's kind of leads into what Gina was getting at, was that if we still have a lot of kids at, at yellow, at halfway through the year or three quarters of the way, they're, they're below what we've taught so far. So I think, you know, kind of just, and I think your question was, how do we compare? Like having 53% of our kids or whatever, right, at grade level, is that comparative to other, other places, right? Not that we're halfway through the year and half the kids have learned at grade level.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah. And I, I, from what I understood and what you were saying is that the at-grade level is what then you'd be expected to know at the end of the year.
Yes, yes.
Learn half of it at the end of the year. So that's the thing.
Yes.
And that might be over.
Yes, fine. I'm just. Match exposure and being successful with grade level content are all different things. So also, let's take a pause to say, remember it's January. So we've done a lot in two marking periods compared to where we were. And we also know that we've got from here till June. So we've got a lot of work to do to keep going. We also know that we have work to do, right? We're constantly growing, evolving and I'm not, in all of my celebrations and praise and saying how wonderful they are, I'm not discrediting the fact that we have work to do. There's no doubt. And just like when we looked at our NJSLA scores and we, you know, we were comfortable before in threes, we're not comfortable in threes anymore. We want to be fours and fives and that's the goal. So this gives us a temperature check of where we are at this point in the year. So we went to the doctors, they took their temperature. Okay, some have a fever. So we need to make sure we address those. Most people, a lot of people are really healthy and on track to staying on track. And that's where we are. Um, that's not to say that when we meet this week, that there won't be lots of things that we're going to talk about and change. Um, we're constantly changing and iterating our curriculum. This is the first time we're going through wit and wisdom. This is the first time we're implementing foundations. This is the first time we're using Hagerty. So this is the first time for reveal in six, seven, eight. So there's still a lot of things that we haven't worked through yet. Um, and so I just want to say that as well. We're not where we need to be.
No, and I, overall, this is so helpful just to even see these numbers like throughout the year. Yeah. I think that's huge because in my mind, what I'm thinking is we see this now, so we can catch a lot of these kids before they get to where our seventh and eighth graders are now. Because, you know, I feel like we've been in that process of like, they were a little behind, a little behind, a little behind, and now they're a lot behind. And we didn't really talk about them in these cohorts and stuff before. So I think this is, this is helpful just to show it to us this way. And that, this is great. And I think like our first, second, our kindergartners now will not get to the point where our seventh and eighth graders are today, which is, is going to be helpful.
So I think educators see the initial sets at the beginning of the year and halfway through, and we probably see our individual kids. But be, being able to see kind of program implementation and see, hey, this is, this is working. Like we're making progress towards something that is helpful for us to see like where we need to.
Yeah, this helps us speak to, you know, what are you doing about test scores?
Okay. All right. I think that's it from the board. Thank you very much. Yes, I just have a few slides that I wanted to give an update. It will be long, I promise. Um, so I wanted to give an update, although you can't see it at the top for, for preschool, just to kind of give you, you know, an update of where we are as of today. Um, we have been investigating another option, um, specifically looking at housing three preschool classes at the elementary school and housing two preschool classes at St. John's. So if you remember, you know, back in November, we talked about this. We had originally looked at perhaps utilizing St. John's for all of our preschool classes. They came back with a pretty high number, I think it was 291, right? 291,000 per year to rent out their facility for all preschool. So we decided, um, really back in December, what if we just rented out literally two classrooms and a conference room? And we could take three of our preschool classes and house them at the elementary school and then the other two house them at St. John's. So we reached out to them before winter break. Um, we proposed this, kind of gave them a number that would work within our preschool expansion budget to help pay for the rent. And we're waiting on a response, which we're hoping to get finalized in the next couple of days. Um, and then we'll have some more information. So I think, uh, this is an exciting possibility, um, which could work well for the district.
And it keeps our class size.
Correct. Maintains our class size. Yep. So we have five sections of preschool this year. We intend on keeping five sections for next year. So we would stay status quo. Uh, so as soon as we find out that information from St. John's, we'll share it with the board and. So as soon as we find out that information from St. John's, we'll share it with the board and obviously the community, and then talk about next steps. I also wanted to give an update just on West Anwell, just a couple of things. In reference to the water issue, and the board knows this, and I've been keeping them up to date, we've reached out to DEP several times since our initial meeting back in November. Here's an example of what I've been getting back. You know, we're working on coordinating with different divisions in the department, we're providing possible dates for meetings on next steps. So this has been going on really since November. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to solidify them with a date to actually meet. Just being fully transparent, I think one of the issues is they don't know what to do at this point, as far as what a remedy goes. So I'm assuming that they're trying to work on that before they would meet with us to figure out next steps. In the interim, obviously, we continue to be on bottled water. You know, it's been relayed to us that, you know, the, the cause of the contamination is the business that's next door. So we've reached out to them and had some initial conversations. They are providing reimbursement for our water that we are purchasing on a monthly basis, our bottled water for our students. And they're trying to work on a resolution as well with the DEP, but nothing as of yet. Andrew and I met on January eighth with the commercial real estate broker that did the broker's opinion on West Anwell back in two thousand twenty-one. We requested that he update the broker's opinion on the West Anwell property. He agreed to do this at no cost. When he did the first go around, he did not include the house in the front, so he is going to include the house this time. We did share with him upfront, as our real estate attorney told us to do, just some of the environmental issues that we're dealing with right now, because obviously that has to factor in the broker's opinion. But we expect to receive an update from him sometime in February, and then we'll report out to the board and then the community. And then something else I wanted to share, so, and again, like Jane Ellen said, I'll send out both presentations tomorrow. But I did send out, I guess it was a week or so ago, to the community about some administrative changes that we will be making for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So I wanted to provide a little bit more detail on that. I did want to give kind of like a history lesson, and, and when this bar goes away in a second, you'll see. But this was our structure from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two. So if you look at the bottom, we did have a supervisor position of STEM and special projects. And then at the end of the two thousand twenty-two school year, the individual that was in that position took a position in another district as an administrator and left the district. So at that point, we kind of really evaluated, you know, where do we go from here as far as this position? We decided at that point that we were going to eliminate the position. And we made that decision really on, based on a lot of the things that Jane Ellen shared tonight. We had a lot of balls that were in the air. We were literally in the second year of our new math program, reveal math. We were getting ready to launch our new wisdom program, we were in the midst of a pilot. We were in, I think, year two of Inspire Science, which was a new program at our elementary. So at that point, with all the different things that were going on and trying to structure the data and the different things that you heard about tonight, we did make the decision to hire two instructional coaches and replace that supervisor position and have a little bit more on-the-ground support at that time, based on all the different initiatives that were taking place and the support that we needed. You know, obviously, we've done a lot of work within those two years, and we felt like, you know, foundational wise, especially K eight, we're in a really good place right now. So unfortunately, our two coaches at the beginning of the year, and it's a good thing for them. They were hired by two other school districts as administrators, so obviously they were talented and, and were rewarded for that. We decided, because it was late in September, like, we weren't going to fill the positions. School year had already started, even though we had budgeted for them in our twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So we kind of just let that, left that open and really evaluated what would be our next steps for twenty-five, twenty-six. And we've decided to add some additional support. So we will be adding the principal in charge of instruction and special projects as an additional support, really to Jane Ellen, to be quite honest with you, because there's a lot of different things, as you can see tonight, that are happening. And that was literally just an ELA in math that you heard about. We didn't even talk about all the different things that are going on in science, eventually social studies, and throughout the district. So that's a big piece. So we really do need an additional person to help support all the different things that we're doing. One person just can't do that all by themselves. So this individual will play a role in that and really help him support a lot of the things that you heard about tonight and be unable to really work on different things that we're focusing on, not only now, but in the future. And we will get some savings from it. So when you look at the two instructional coaches, as far as their salary and benefits, and then the administrative position, we save about almost sixty-one thousand dollars for our twenty-five, twenty-six school budget. So I just wanted to give some background and some rationale. You know, we did have a similar structure, you know, a couple of years ago. We're going to return back to that structure moving forward, starting in July of, of this coming year. And that's all I, I have. Okay, many questions about that?
Any questions from the board?
So for the principal, for the next September, for this.
September twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, you know?
We know for sure five classes. We have three classrooms available to us at the elementary, no matter what. So we're, we're, our question right now is just St. John's availability and backup plans would be West Anwell?
Yes, but I honestly feel like if we're able to come and work with St. John's, that would be our number one option right now. As long as they don't come back with a crazy amount of, yeah.
For that, we come to the period of public comments. We have a few fees at every meeting. Give me one minute, give me a little spiel. Just a reminder, we do procedures and requirements that include standards of conduct that need to be followed by members of the public during public comments. A member of the public becomes disruptive during a public meeting, including during any period of public comment. A member of the board in charge of running the public meeting can warn the disruptive member of the public that continued disruption may result in being prevented from speaking during the public meeting or removed from the public meeting. Disruptive conduct includes sustained and inappropriate behaviors, such as, but not necessarily limited to shouting, interruption, and use of profanity. All comments seen as abusive, obscene, or depamatory. No participant may speak more than once during each public comment period, and then we do have tools on. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for maximum three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name and municipality. I would say you are welcome to ask questions of the board, we will, if it's something that we can easily answer, we will try to do so. If not, we may take that under advisement and come back to you with a detailed answer. And with that, public comment is open, please.
Good evening, my name is Lindsay Jamison, and I have served as students at South Hundred and Regional School District for the past eighteen years. I don't envy the decisions the Board of Education needs to make about the future preschool programming. Clearly, we are all finding ourselves in positions that make serving our students in our community more and more difficult. As someone who works with your children every day, I remain committed to making sure our classroom and lessons provide the literal and figurative space for them to flourish and grow, to find their voice, to discover their potential. I, along with the members of the South Hundred and Regional Education Association, are willing to work with you so that all of our staff can continue providing a phenomenal education program to our students, your children, so they can grow and explore, developing into lifelong learners. As you make your difficult decisions, we ask that you ensure the proper contingency plans are in place so that our schools and students may continue to thrive. We all look forward to you, we all look to you to ensure that our staff and students are provided the space to continue teaching and learning in an environment conducive to meeting every child's needs. We have worked with satellite sites like the St. John's Jesus School before, and we hope such a solution or similar one can be found to ensure our students and staff can continue our hard and worthwhile programming. Some have said we will find three rooms somewhere. How does the board intend on making this happen to set the students up for success? What will our classrooms and schools look like when the doors open in the coming years? Will our classrooms be bursting at the seams? Will our kindergarten students be able to find their space, their voice, and their potential in crowded classrooms of thirty students? Will teachers need to sacrifice creative spaces such as dramatic play, reading corners, STEM, and art centers? Because we will need more desks to accommodate overcrowded classrooms. If we need to increase class sizes and cut staff, how will that impact the immediate and long-term needs of our students as they progress through these formative years? Will they have the opportunity to grow and explore? Or will they be confined and constrained because our classes don't provide the physical and social space to grow? The SHREA encourages and is willing to work with the board to ensure, if one door must close, other doors will open to spaces and classrooms where all our students, preschool through grade eight, can continue to grow and explore, flourish, and nourish their love of learning. Where teachers have the flexibility and the opportunity to ensure that every child receives what they need in order to chart their path forward. We ask the board to have a plan in place before any doors are closed for good. Thank you.
Anyone else have something they'd like to bring? Do we have anybody on the line? We do not. Okay, all right. Anyone that, final call, anyone, anything to bring for the board? Seeing nobody, I'm going to close the period of public comment. And as I mentioned before, we will have a second one, we will have a second one. At this time, it's eight oh two, we've been in it for an hour, I'd like to take a, I'd like to ask for a five-minute recess. Everybody's okay with that, probably people in opportunity to get a drink, use the bathroom. And so, I need to move, going to recess at eight oh two, if you'll come back out at eight oh seven. The move by Ron, can I have a second, please? Second by Jen, I believe, all in favor? Aye, okay, we're in recess for five minutes.
It is only Monday, yesterday and today felt like they had been thirty-five hour days. Yesterday was my wife's birthday. Actually felt like a fifty hour. We had, we had family dinner, but we also watched the Eagles game.
Second.
Next by Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to our committee reports. We will start with building grounds, transportation plans, safety, Mr. Pete.
So this is a long one, if I miss anything, I apologize. So finance, building grounds, transportation, and sacred committee met January twenty-third. We had a presentation from auditing firm, presented a twenty twenty-four annual comprehensive financial report. So the full report is posted online, in addition to a shorter summary for anyone to review it. There's an agenda tonight for approval of the corrective action plan. Buildings and grounds updates. So the middle school, so as, as of our meeting on Thursday, the DEP has not released the treatment works approval permit yet, and we're waiting on the sprinkler system to be approved, right, for the DCA? In this meeting tonight, Tony talked about water issue at West Anwell and the pre-k program. We'll be working with our bond attorney, pair of bids for the athletic fields, and the next steps will be discussed at our next meeting in February. So financial updates, we'll be, we'll be moving items eight through N this evening. Bill's list of financial reports. Contracts, we are reapproving several agreements, including the Fairview Lake camp. So moving forward, the Fairview camp, and all my kids went to, my wife went to, we'll be doing this as fifth graders instead of sixth, I don't know if it's sixth graders, as long as I can remember. So I think it's a good opportunity as the kids are going to the elementary school, the middle school, to have a, a chance to bonding. It's like a chance to get together at that, at that, I get my kids, my kids love it. If anything else major. The resolution to join the Bergen County DSC, it's the quadrant purchasing program. Yes, the intent with that is to make things less expensive for us, as a school, as a great, as part of a co-op, we can bid, we can, I'm saying, we can have a larger organization to have, to make things cheaper for us. That's really helping, but maybe things I have, it's a transportation update, so. Much bus purchase, we're waiting on the delivery of the bus and then the installation of the cat safety cameras and. The tentative routes for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year complete. I think that's all I have, so I guess with that. Like to move items A through M.
A move by Brian, second question, questions like that. And discussion on item A through N. I would second what Brian said about Camp Fairview, we have been doing that since the mid-eighties here. In this area or all three of our. Elementary schools, this year, I believe, fifth and sixth grader went to it. So as it turns out, we're even though we're switching to, it'll start in the fifth grade. So we're, we all, it's coming up from the elementary school in Lamontville and they're becoming this building and one of the first big activities they knew together, it's going to be great. And we haven't missed any grades, so I think that's worked out very well. I would also mention, as Brian mentioned, the audit. This is something that we do every year, we have our, our finances audited by a professional firm. The orders, we have a different order, the current order is Bill, Mr. Colin Hunter's firm. I will read, there is a, a letter that says. This is their official letter, it says, we noted no transactions entered into by South Huron Regional School District during the year. For which there is a lack of authoritative guidance or consensus, all significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements in the proper period. Brian mentioned the corrective action plan that is also covered in this letter. And it says, professional standards require if they're cumulate all known and likely misstatements identified during the audit. Other than those that are clearly trivial and communicate them to the appropriate level of management. Management has corrected all such misstatements. In addition, none of the misstatements detected as a result of audit procedures incorrected by management were material. Either individually or in the aggregate. Each opinion's unit financial statement taken as a whole. So this is not unusual that there are findings that there are little things that we could have done differently, process things. The two items in the corrective action plan are. In some instances, the district did not obtain any proper approval signatures and receiving signatures certifying goods and services. My understanding is this is when this occurred because we had a year-long contract. And we signed that contract thinking that when we signed the contract that was. We were covered, however, because we were paying that in monthly installments. Apparently, we need to make those signatures once a month, and so we will do that going forward. The other item is that says that this says some records were not, records and processes. Were completely accurate, which again is related to that particular finding. And so we will make sure that those signatures are properly kept going forward. Are there any questions from the board on any of the items on the ground? Or things to discuss? If not, then let's vote.
Jennifer Batsford?
Yes.
Professor Dennis?
Yes.
You know, for shutting?
Yes, excuse me, yes.
Brian Keys, yes. Governor Wessie?
Yes. Mike Strass?
Yes.
Ronnie Targarena?
Yeah.
From now? Yes. Next up is our personnel committee.
Yeah, so the personnel committee met on January twenty-second. At the committee meeting. We reviewed the personnel actions and appointments that are on the agenda this evening. Tony advised the committee, the administrative team restructuring. That is, he mentioned in his update. So that involves Mr. Miller becoming principal in charge of instruction, special projects. Which will support all three of the district schools. As Tony. Explained, he'll be replacing the two instructional coaches that were previously the budget. Mrs. McKnight will be the new principal of the middle school, Mr. Jason Miller will remain the vice principal, the athletic director of the high school. And Mrs. Quinones will remain the principal of the elementary school. Also, the superintendent advised the committee that a grievance was received from the S H R E A. Related to that restructuring. And that will be discussed at the executive session this evening. The committee was also advised of the timeline related to the hiring of the new high school principal. That will be advertised from February third to March eighteenth, with interviews taking place on April second and April third. Recommendation is anticipated to be made to the board at the April twentieth meeting. Also. We were, the committee was advised of new positions at the middle school, which would be needed for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. This will be part of budget discussions for the board in the coming months. They include art teacher, a French teacher, and a Spanish teacher. Finally, the committee was advised that the negotiations committee had been created. And the district will begin S H R A negotiation sometime in February. And with that, I'd like to move items A.
Second, second part, Mr. Peters, thank you. Any discussion on, on items A and B?
Say one. One of the, one of the items here is the stepping recognition of Tom Bill, who was a counselor here at the high school. And I just want to say. Not only Mr. Billy, fantastic counselor, he is a better human beings. And so I am glad for us to see him go, but I wish him a best thing in retirement. Any other discussion on this? I would back that vote.
President Dennis?
Yes.
Jennifer Shetty?
Yes.
Brian Keys, yes. Kevin Koberles?
Yes.
Mike Strass?
Yes.
Senator Batsford?
Yes.
Ronnie Targarena?
Yes.
And down?
Yes. Curriculum and technology.
So we met as a group on Wednesday, January fifteenth, we welcomed Shetty to the committee. And the first order of business, we did a review, a draft of the five to eight middle school schedule. So. That is going, we're going to be looking at potential staffing needs from there. And we'll likely be sharing that finalized schedule format after it goes through. Different stakeholders in the March board event meeting. It'll be followed by meetings with parents and students in those grade levels. Who are going to be using that new schedule to explain all of that as well. We also reviewed a presentation for the gifted and talented parent focus committee. That was going to be happening the next night, Ms. Lennon brought us through that. If you recall, last year, we did an audit of that program and some changes were recommended. In order to do that, we are bringing in community, community input, we had twenty-eight. People sign up to be part of this focus group and the feedback will be used to shape the program for the future. It's going to be aligning with the reshaping of the district at the same time. And that committee will also develop a full timeline to implement at the K to A level in the new structure for next year. We also. Saw a draft of the winter benchmark that was seen this evening and we went over timing for the school-wide. Benchmark data meetings, so that's going to be happening in mid-February and also for parents that are looking to receive their kids' data. After those data meetings are happening, that will be sent home, we just want the teachers to have the ability to articulate. About that first and then, and then move through it. We did have two additional items that were on the agenda, they've worked tabled because we went pretty deep into the first bit. And we're not as, as important to be getting through this month, we'll be handling those in February. I have nothing to move.
The report. Policy.
We met on January sixteenth and continue to review the regulation and policy. It's hundred around attendance, it's a mandatory change, it relates to the addition of an. Excused absence having to do with attending civic events. Nothing significant to get there, but we can take the opportunity to review the policy and regulation whole. We did replace in the policy, natural parent or biological parent. We also made a further change, changing for rental rights to legal authority, so that the definition now says. For the purposes of this policy, parent means the party with legal authority, including a biological parent and adoptive parents, so. We also made an additional change to the regulation having to do with student illnesses and support. Those need to be notification by the parent, but also noting that absences from school due to student illness well considered confused and reference truancy are considered cumulative and may count for loss of credit. So that additional language was added to the regulation. Other changes in the regulation were consistent with what we had in the policy previously, and those remain, and there are no changes from the update that we made back in November when we looked at this first, so this is a second read.
Okay, so I'll move. I have a second question.
Second?
Second, thank you, my name is Beth on the policy. There's no discussion, then let's vote. Sergeant Jennifer Shelley?
Yes.
Brian Keys? Yes. Kevin Koberles? Mike Strass?
Yes.
Senator Batsford?
Yes.
Mike Dennis?
Yes.
Ronnie Targarena?
Yes.
Kim Galton? Yes. Bottom right now.
The school meeting, we met on January twenty-first. First thing we did was we reviewed a draft of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year calendar. Some changes that, that we would note is, for a long time, we've had the professional development day on the, on November first, the day after Halloween, but because Halloween is on a Friday. This year, we will take advantage of moving that to October thirteen. Which means that kids will actually have more school in November than we do a lot of the time, so. We also looked at. Spring break and proposed dates that would allow it to span both Passover and. We also brainstormed committee goals for twenty twenty-five. A lot of that has to do with analyzing the previous communication tools, developing additional resources and guides for parents. Really, again, looking at communication and engage, community engagement as the primary strategic plan goals for our committee. We want to look at, you know, the evaluate. Use advisory groups and focus groups to continue to evaluate our current programs and then also to inform in future programming. And we want to look at ways that we can expand how we celebrate academic.
And just, can I just mention something about the calendar? So typically, the way it works is this month is just on for review, we'll bring it back to the board next month and that's when we'll vote on it appropriately. So let's see, that brings us up to our routing information items. We do not have any, we didn't have, we didn't have any last month, I hope that we moved there. So, routing information items, we do not have any HIVs for the fourth. We did have fire and safety drills on the dates that are in this agenda. And. Our enrollment report is attached online for anyone who would like to review it. Well, that brings us to the second period of public comment, same rules quiet as the first, if anyone has something to bring for the board. When anybody should come up and give us your thoughts. That the period of public comment is open, if anybody wants to turn something.
Evening. Hello. I just wanted to give an update on behalf of the L A F. We are, wait, I was a little late to meeting, so I apologize. So the board members were really delighted when we saw the parent square update this afternoon to see the pictures of the mural. That was a result of the L A F grant from last year. We don't always get to see the results of our grants in person or even the photographs of it, so this was really nice to see what was done with that and. I really appreciate your sharing it with the whole school community because so many members of this school community are the generous donors who made that grant possible. So thank you for sharing that with all of us, it looks great, so. I don't know, teacher who coordinated that is here tonight, but thank you very much. Wanted to let everyone know that the spring fundraiser is in the planning stages, we are having an auction and casino night on March twenty-nine. A little bit of a twist on our theme and tickets are already on sale, our venue has a smaller capacity than our prior venue, so we do encourage people to purchase tickets early. And our sponsorships are also on sale, that's really the critical piece, helps us raise money to give more grants back to the school. Open right now for submission to Mr. Peterson are the. Summer awards and senior awards that we give out annually. The deadline for the senior awards is March twenty-fifth and those are awarded to graduating seniors for use in. Tuition or other educationally relevant items as they go on to a two or four-year or vocational or technical school. There, we also have open the applications for summer awards, those provide, those are provided to rising sophomores, juniors, or seniors for summer enrichment programs. And the deadline for that is March fourteen. Thank you.
Thank you, what a question, where's, where is venue?
It's going to be, it's in Ringo's at, I think it's Amwell Valley.
Oh, at their fire?
Their firehouse, yeah, upstairs at their firehouse, and they've been great, they've been working with us and they have. Some of the people who are volunteers with that organization have family members in our district, so they've really been great to work with. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, actually, one final question, where could somebody, and where could, what was?
At the L A F dot.
The L A F dot.
Yes, I think Mr. Suzo did send out a statement date for parent square, and there's a link there.
I'll send something out again, a couple more times.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to bring for the board?
Hello, my name is Andrea Little, I'm from West Hamwell Township. Like to just state a few observations from this past month. Congratulations on the shift of the new committee leads. I saw that was in the notes today and I heard your discussion earlier in the month, I thought it was really refreshing just talking about. Some of the new ideas that new board members are talking about. So congratulations for your new endeavor. It was good to also see the curriculum support this evening. And I see that was a principal that's going to be taking that position, so. I'm not sure if the principal is taking over another location, so that will be really interesting to see how that develops. Where you're going to position them. Within the reporting in building and grounds and transportation, it also stated in our enrollment. There was like a lot of forms that were signed that you were discussing, and one of them was showing that our enrollment was down six percent from last year. And it's actually showed also it was our lowest enrollment in the last nine years. And then it also stated that our choice was locked in at ninety-seven. Which is twelve percent of our student body, just again, data points to be thinking about when we are looking at our facilities. And in the superintendent's report, we got to hear. From you about some of the new ideas continuing about how to restructure the buildings. We also got to hear from the student association, the teacher association, excuse me. And I'm just asking the board to consider two measures to restructure. I know this is not very popular for you all to consider because we've. Probably discussed this before and, and brought this up, but one of them is. To really reconsider and don't accept choice in the elementary school. It's a very tight space in that school, it can hold two grades per class if we would. Stop that situation for now. And then when the school was renovated, we didn't really allow for enough space to manage that. The other option would also be to restructure and move one grade up to the middle school, I know that's also not very popular, but there's space for eighth grade at South. And our population is shrinking, we have two hundred less kids in our district in the last nine years. We have three buildings prescribed from the referendum, we should utilize them, we should make it functional, it's. Not sustainable to consider otherwise, and it's not environmentally sustainable to have more than three, thank you very much.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to bring before you? We have anyone? Okay. Seeing nobody, I will close this period of public comment. We do, we do have a need to go into an executive session this season. That will probably take about twenty minutes. Um, that will probably take about twenty minutes. Um, we will not be taking any action when there's not some executive session. Um, so with that, I mean, the motion to go into second session at eight thirty-one. We move by Ron.